Would always like what is best and what they need. Give us all the patience, love, strength, diligence that it takes as educators to lead the youth of today and guide us into tomorrow. We ask all this in your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that we have three members absent for various reasons. That's beyond their control. Item number one, recommendation to approve the adoption of the minutes of the regular board meeting held Tuesday, October the fifteenth, as printed and mailed to board members and published in the Weekly News, which is the official journal of the board. What's the pleasure?
I'll make that motion.
Move by Mr. Jay. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Keith. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion passes. Item number two is an action item. Resolution of respect to the late Don Patrick Husbands, retired teacher. Ms. Amy.
Whereas God in his infinite wisdom has called to his eternal resting place, Don Patrick Husbands, retired teacher, and whereas Mr. Don Patrick Husbands has devoted thirty-three and a half years of service to this educational system. Mr. Husbands received a Bachelor of Science from Louisiana Christian University in nineteen seventy-seven, whereas Mr. Husbands' thirty-three and a half years of service included nineteen seventy-seven through nineteen eighty-one at Rain High School, nineteen eighty-one through nineteen eighty-five at U. Iberia High School, nineteen eighty-five through nineteen eighty-eight at Marksville High School, nineteen eighty-eight through nineteen ninety-three at Menorah High School, and nineteen ninety-three through nineteen ninety-four Bunky High School, and nineteen ninety-four to two thousand and ten at Marksville High School. Mr. Husbands retired in two thousand and ten and returned to work as a retiree in two thousand and fifteen in a Vols Parish for the second semester, whereas this board feels that his passing to his eternal reward should be noted at this time in recognition of the unselfish service he rendered to the cause of public health for so many years. Now therefore be it resolved that the Vols Parish School Board expresses its sincere regret in the loss of this beloved former employee, and be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the official minutes of the Vols Parish School Board and that a copy be transmitted to his family, and I so move.
I'll say. Moved by Ms. Amy, seconded by Mr. Ricky. Anybody on the board have any comments?
I knew Mr. Don, I'm sorry. Do you want to speak? I knew Mr. Don, actually I got to know him probably about ten, fifteen years ago. My wife's very good friends with his wife and just fine, fine, fine.
First.
Coach went through many generations and he would seem like he was always around him with the kids and he will be definitely missed.
Anybody from the audience? If not, all in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion of the resolution will be sent to the family. Item number three, this is the most important part of the meeting, Ms. Superintendent.
It's the most fun part for sure. Thank you.
It would be the recognition of the students of the month.
Yeah. So we're always excited to have our original teachers so we can recognize our students, recognize our teachers. We've got a couple of extra expeditions tonight, so y'all are in for a real treat. It's a good night. So we will start with our students of the month, and we will start with Bella. Bella student of the month is Illyria Markott. Illyria is in the sixth grade. Her teachers are Ms. Patterson, Ms. Roy, and Ms. Richay. Her favorite subjects are science, math, and art. Her greatest achievements are beta for two years, Bella Bell's vice president, nominated for student of the year, A. Honor Roll scored in the grade eight level for reading comprehension for literature and eye-ready reading. Her hobbies are reading, drawing, playing Robelets. Her future plans are to study medicine and become a doctor. Congratulations, Illyria. Okay, Cottonwood?
Peyton Jossall. Peyton's in the sixth grade. His teachers are Ms. Alex, Mr. Regis, and Ms. Gail. His favorite subjects are E.L.A., social studies, and math. His academic achievements include overall student of the month for October twenty-twenty-two, junior beta twenty-three and twenty-four, junior beta twenty-four and twenty-five, and junior beta treasurer for twenty-four and twenty-five. His hobbies include hunting, fishing, Fortnite, and video games. His future plans are to become a welder, and electrician, and a business owner. Congratulations, Peyton.
To the heart.
Andy Catherine Gilbo.
Marksville Elementary? Marksville Elementary student of the month is Zaire Lynn Mouton. Zaire is in the third grade at Marksville Elementary. His teachers are Ms. Lauren, Brooke, Morgan, and Judy. His favorite subjects are math and social studies. His achievements are A.B. Honor Roll student of the month, Dibbles Awards, class sergeant in arms, and above-average scores in E.L.A. His hobbies include drawing, playing with friends, playing PC and Xbox, playing with siblings, painting, soccer, and building. His future plans is to go to the fourth grade once schooling is complete. He plans to have a career as a detective or an FBI agent. Congratulations, Zaire.
Okay, Closhville Elementary?
Sebastian Dupont. Sebastian is a sixth grader. Teachers are Ms. Avery, Ms. Sarah, Ms. Amanda. Favorite subjects, E.L.A. Academic achievements, member of four-H Club, positive office referrals, prior student of the month. Hobbies, art, drawing, and creating clay figures. Future plans, to be a movie producer and/or be an actor. Congratulations.
Riverside?
Navia Bass?
Navea.
Navea, I'm sorry. Navea is in second grade. Teachers, Ms. Yvonne and Ms. Victoria. Favorite subjects, social studies and C.K. L.A. knowledge. Academic achievements, A.B. Honor Roll student of the month, benchmark for Dibbles. Enjoys gymnastics and is working hard to get into dance class. Future plans, wants to be a professional dancer. Congratulations.
Okay, Vols High?
Okay, Rakaya Harns? Okay.
And we will move on to Bunky Magnet High?
Margaret Newton. Margaret is in seventh grade. Teachers, Ms. Lever, Ms. Misty, Ms. Rhonda, and Ms. Leary. Favorite subjects, her favorite subject is math. Academic achievements, my beta student council, F.C.A. middle school and JV basketball team, middle school softball team. Hobbies, softball, basketball, riding the golf cart, playing outside. Future plans, graduate high school, go to college, play softball or basketball in college, graduate college and continue to do what Jesus wants me to do. Amen. Congratulations.
What's that ask?
Austin Rabale. Austin is in the tenth grade at LaSass. His teachers are Ms. Julie Humble, Ms. Kristi Parkham, Jeremy Bonnet, Ms. William Wilbur, K.E. Roy, and William Morrow. His favorite subjects are math, health, and A. Academic achievements, completed in small engines, making it to the state level. Says I've always made honor roll. His hobbies, I play baseball while also having a love for mechanics. I enjoy working out and studying fitness as well. I also enjoy spending time with the loved ones. His future plans, I plan to attend Louisiana Tech for mechanical engineering. Congratulations, Austin.
And Marksville High School?
Marksville High School's student of the month is Addison Borlon. Addison is in the tenth grade. Her teachers are Ms. Nettie, Mr. Chud, Ms. Kelsey, and Mr. Phillip. Favorite subjects, world geography, biology, and English. Academic achievements, school activities. She has been a part of FFA for one year. She is an FFA officer. She serves in the role of reporter. She is part of the nursery landscape club as well. She would like to become secretary of FFA in the future. Her hobbies include singing. She's a part of her church choir, and she loves her church. She loves fashion. She loves to do hair and makeup. She loves to watch and play with her three-year-old, sorry, two-year-old sister. She loves to watch fashion shows and people do hair, and she loves to shop. Her future plans includes becoming a dentist and working her way up to oral surgeon. She plans to be a part of ministry, and she would love to become a youth pastor. Congratulations, Addison.
Thank you. Okay, so if y'all will sit tight for a little while, when we get done with several other things, we're going to ask you to go to the back with Ms. Amy, and we're going to take pictures. So just sit tight with us for a few more minutes. Thank you.
All right, the next item is recognition of the teachers of the month for October. Ms. Superintendent?
Okay. I am so very fortunate that Ms. Prater does our names out loud for teacher of the month, so I am going to turn it over to her.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
And I am always honored to recognize all the teachers of the month, so for the month of October, together with Bunky Elementary Learning Academy, Ms. Gillis Moore.
Congratulations.
Cottonwood Elementary, Ms. Brandy Williams. LaFarg Elementary, Ms. Casey Dupree. Marksville Elementary, Ms. Carla Williams. Closhville Elementary, Ms. Jessica DeColle. Riverside Elementary, Mr. William Lee. I lost where the camera was.
Okay, congratulations.
Avoyles High School, Ms. Melanie Williams. Bunky Magnet High School, Ms. Deborah LeBlanc. I did see in the audience, but I'm just reading off the table.
Well, I'm going to, we're going to hold this plaque and get you another plaque. As you were not, no, no, take a picture. You're not going to miss your mark. Look, from where Chuck's sitting, nobody sees from there. I'll get started with Victoria. Thank you.
LaSass, Ms. Summer Anderson. And Marksville High School, Ms. Jasmine Williams. Congratulations to all our outstanding teachers of the month.
Item number five, recognition of the two thousand and twenty-five principal of the year. Ms. Tudor?
I am so excited to be able to bring back principal of the year. We haven't had this in a Vols Parish for a while, I know for as long as I've been here, and while we can't say lots of, we can't share lots of specific information today, please make sure you are watching our website tomorrow morning, late morning, because we do have some really, really good and really, really exciting information to share. And so our, our people, and I'm going to say this, all our people have really bought in to the work we're doing and the, the things that we're doing to make, to make our students, to give our students more opportunities and to help our students achieve better. Our goal is for all of our kids to achieve at a mastery level across the parish so that we can do what we need to do to make, to make our communities grow, to really make our economic development thrive, to really give our kids the opportunity to go out into the world and do whatever it is they want to do next. Look, I'm going to get teary-eyed here. I'm excited to present the principal of the year to Ms. Toni Wilson. I don't think I said this, but Toni is the principal at Riverside. And y'all, Riverside has done some amazing things, amazing things. This year, they raised their mastery score six percent. Y'all, that is huge. Six percent is a lot of kids.
Yes.
Yes. So we're so excited for her, we're so excited for her staff, so excited for our children. So please, I guess I'm a pen to get this time. So we're going to take pictures and then we're going to give her one more good round of applause. Good. So thank you, Marksville.
Oh, no, no. Well, you say this, on behalf of the faculty and staff of Riverside Elementary, I'm accepting this on their behalf, because they have supported me and their willingness to learn and grow with me. So thank you, Riverside Elementary.
Congratulations.
You want to do the cards before we let them go take pictures? All right, one more item before we take pictures. Recognition of the holiday card art design winners, Ms. Amy.
Hey, I get the really, really fun card. So I think at some point this summer, Ms. Tudor and I discussed about having an art contest throughout the district, and we decided upon letting the art design be the cover of the Christmas cards that we send out from the district. So.
So this was really fun for me and Amy. I hope everybody else had a good time with this, but I can tell you, we had a great time with it.
So after, after we got all our ducks in a row of how we were going to do it, we decided in four divisions, so there was a K. to second grade level, there was a third to sixth grade level, there was a seventh and eighth, so a middle school, and there was a high school level. So four different divisions, and the month of October, beginning of September, month of October, that information went out and students got to draw, and at the end of October, those designs were due to the school, and then the schools got to choose their winners for their divisions per school. So then each school submitted two, a winner per division, to the central office, and then we had a competition here to narrow it down. We had several submissions in all divisions from all of the schools. So tonight, we are, we want to share with you those winning designs, and then we'd like to recognize those artists. And I'm sorry to say, we don't have the cards. They are actually out being printed, so that we will have them when we get back from Thanksgiving, so that we can get those in the mail. And students, those of you that were the artists, you will get a card that has your design on it, we just don't have it tonight, okay? So we'd like to recognize those artists.
And you'll see their cards on the screen. Ms. Ricky, go scroll for us. So you'll see their actual cards on the screen, and then some of you go forward to get them up in the mail.
Yes. So our K. through second grade winner is from Bunky Elementary Learning Academy, Ms. Samire McGlorry. And that was her, that's from her Christmas card.
And her name and her school will be on the back of it.
Do you want me to take a picture here and back there?
Yeah, well, I know Ms. Sherry's wanting a picture of her. Yes, okay, so I'm going to confuse it, and then we're going to take you back cards when we get them all back in the printer, right? Ms. Tudor? Oh, oh, I'm sorry. So many cameras. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Okay, our third through sixth grade winner is Colton Tyler from LaFarg Elementary.
Congratulations. Good job. You sound pretty good. We good? All right, congratulations.
All right, our middle school level winner is Rayleigh Bates, eighth grade from Avoyles High.
Here we go. Let's see where our cameras are now. See, camera over here. All right, congratulations. Thank you so much.
Okay, then our high school winner is Reagan Cuvion, tenth grade from Avoyles High. Then we had a bonus winner. We had so many, so many great, great creative designs that we couldn't just choose four, so we did choose an overall winner, and that artist is Ms. Quinn Smith, twelfth grade from LaSass.
Okay, so principals, if you have a plaque left up on the table or a certificate, please pick that up except for Bunky High, and we'll get that taken care of. We also would like to ask you to go with Ms. Amy to the back, and we're going to take lots more pictures. So thank y'all again for coming tonight, we really, really do appreciate it, and she, you can call her right out.
Yes, students, teachers, and, and my artists, if you're calling me.
Yes. Can we not take our picture with you? Six percent.
That's big.
Here with your brother, with your brother.
Yes.
You get better the rest of the way.
There we go, high five.
Yes, you look so nice.
Good job.
Bye, y'all.
Awesome, I love it.
Y'all come back and visit. Good seeing you. I'll take my chair back now, thank you.
Okay, items seven through.
Mary, Mary? Thank you.
Okay, items seven through ten are informational items, no action would be required. Item number seven, sales tax report for the month of October. Ms. Jessica?
Ms. Jessica's not here, Ms. Mary's going to do that.
All right.
Good evening, how y'all doing? Okay, so you have the report in front of you, and so I'm going to report the total taxes collected, the APSB portion, nine hundred sixty-one thousand, six oh two ninety-seven, and the increase is twenty thousand, five twenty-one sixty-eight, and that's from prior year to current year, October to October. The percentage of change is two point one eight, and last month, we had an increase of point eight six. So there's actually a percentage increase in motor vehicles, eighteen point seven three percent, and three audits were completed at eighteen thousand, seven forty-seven oh eight. Any questions on that? Okay, the next screen shows the year-to-date comparison. It's down point eight eight percent, but, which is very slight, but it, it looks like it's, it's coming back up, so not to worry about that. And the next slide is the calendar year-to-date collections, three point two four percent increase. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Thank you, Ms. Mary. Monthly maintenance report, Mr. Ricky?
I didn't see anything. I've seen a lot of, pretty big one this time, but it's nothing stood out, yeah.
Anybody else got any comment, question? All righty, thank you. Monthly general fund, twenty-four, twenty-five school to-date report, year-to-date report with comparisons, Ms. Mary?
Okay, I'm not sure that's the first one I want you to see. There one, there's one that's labeled general fund. This is monthly general fund reporting, September twenty-twenty-four. It should say balance sheet. Did they not include that in there? And it's fine if it's not. There it is. There you go, okay. So this is the statement of position at September thirtieth of this year compared to last year, so it's close to the same, it's a little, about three hundred thousand dollars more. Any questions on that? We still have our investments, we still have enough cash flow to retain those investments, so the interest rates have dropped like a quarter of a percent, but we're still making as much money as we can on them. Okay?
Aren't you going to have to tell me where you want me to go back to?
So.
I don't know why I saw her upside down.
Upside down. It's upside down, yeah.
So I'm going to go back to the first one, that's this one.
Okay, those are the total revenues. These are the year-to-date revenues as compared to budget and prior year as of September thirtieth. Of course, we just had one payroll. So the total revenues were eleven point five six six million compared to eleven point one six eight million. Yeah, I don't know.
We have a new scanner. All I tell you is we have a new scanner.
Okay, we'll learn.
Yeah, I don't know how to turn it without turning everything.
Any question on the revenues? Not a large change? Okay, expenditures? Okay, it should start with reg- Okay, it should start with regular programs. That's it, okay. So those are your total line item expenditures this year compared to last year, September. And they total 6.3 million versus last year 6.8 million. And you might see a tiny difference. Any questions?
It seems to be only the totals that are upside down.
Did that on purpose, no?
I don't know. I don't know if we know how to do that on purpose.
All right, any questions? Y'all don't have to vote on it. Next month I'll have a budget revision. We've been working on that, so we'll proceed.
Thank you, Ms. Mary. Personnel changes, Ms. Thelma.
So before you, you have the personnel changes by school. We have a few transfers. And when I say transfers, they transfer from one position to the next and some appointments and a few resignations. All right, and the last page are basically the reflection of your personnel changes. Any questions?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next, we have our consent items. We'll just have a motion to accept them all. We can, however, discuss any one of them if you so desire. We have an agreement there between Xerox Services. We also have a renewal for a gifted teacher. We also have a recommendation to approve our E-Rate leased kit. There's a recommendation to purchase curriculum materials. There are some policies that are required to be changed according to the state, which we really don't have an option there, but to accept them. We also have a, an approval for the recommendation to redo six of our elementary cafeterias and the lunchrooms. And that'll be nice. Also, we have a recommendation to approve overnight travel. What's the pleasure?
Mr. President, there's no other discussion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent items.
Okay, move by Mr. Jay.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Keith. Any discussion on any particular item? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye to tap the gavel.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion passes. The, we, next items 19 through 25 are your action items. Item number 19, recommendation to terminate the contract for camera tickets with the city of Marksville. Mr. Keith?
Yes, I, I think we already went through this. It was just another procedure we needed to. So I'd like to so move that we terminate the contract for the camera tickets of the city of Marksville.
I'll second.
All right, move by Mr. Keith, seconded by Ms. Amy. Any further, any further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
There are five ayes and one nay. The motion passes. Item number 20, recommendation to authorize the superintendent and the board president to begin discussions on the planning of the partnership development coming forth between education sports and the recreation complex in Bay Hills, which is very exciting. Ms. Superintendent?
It is so very exciting. We had a meeting earlier with Representative Darrell Desatell and he has, he has some money that he is willing to give us to build a new career educational, career technical center in the Bay Hills area. He's gonna get somewhere around $15 million. He's actually getting more than that, but that's what he's gonna give us to do our part in what, what we wanna do out there. And y'all, it is so exciting for us. It is gonna give our kids opportunities that we would never be able to do in a new facility with state-of-the-art equipment and technology. And it is, it is really gonna be something that is gonna make a difference for kids in a false parish. Jay, I think maybe did some work on this. Anything you wanna add?
No, just that it's gonna probably happen pretty fast. So I think it's a, it's a good idea to authorize you and whoever the board president is to, to have these discussions, 'cause some of this stuff might be moving faster than it was going along with it.
Yes, we do expect it to move fast. We have to have everything completed, I think, by December of 2026. And y'all, that's, that's really fast to build a new school. So we, it is exciting work. We're looking forward to it, but we're ready to hit the ground running.
I'll make, I'll make the motion to authorize.
Move by Mr. Ricky. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Amy. As far as the other part of the discussion, as far as the ad hoc committee, I'm sure I'll be rotating off eventually. But I, Ms. Letitia, would you mind serving?
I know that Mr. Chris, he's not here today, but he was interested in being a part. Mr. Chris.
Okay, I was gonna ask one of you.
Yes.
So you want him to do that?
Yeah, he's very interested in, he and I spoke about it. I know he reached out.
He told me about that. Okay, that's fine. Any other questions about the ad hoc committee then?
But I will say, I apologize. I will say if he's unable to, I'll definitely serve.
Okay, thanks. All right. Item number 21, recommendation to approve the lapse digital fingerprint.
We didn't take a vote.
EYO option three.
Ricky made the motion, I seconded, and we didn't take a vote.
Okay, I'm sorry. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes have it, the motion passes. And in that motion, it would include the ad hoc committee?
Yes.
Okay. The next one is recommendation to approve the lapse digital fingerprint EYO option three. Ms. Thelma?
All right, I'm asking the board to...
Whatever that means.
Is to upgrade our fingerprint machine. We have no option but to upgrade. So we, we did choose option three and the cost is $19,230 and it includes $16,616 for the, the machine, the equipment, plus a three-year support of $2,613. And you see the other things that it, it includes. But we have to upgrade our fingerprinting machine to be in compliance with the state guidelines.
All right, any, any questions? Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay?
Wait, nobody made a motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve item 21, the lapse digital fingerprint option three for a total of $19,230.
I'm supposed to know, I'm supposed to know better than that.
I'll second that.
All right, the motion has been made by Mr. Jay, seconded by Ms. Amy. Any further discussions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Thelma. The next one is the recommendation to approve the camera drops and switches at LaSass and the amount of... Two-hundred-and-twenty, no, $21,299.09. Ms. Ginger, you wanna say something about this or not?
Looking to put cameras in our classrooms. I think it's about safety and monitoring and, and we don't have any right now except for our spare classrooms, but it's just something that I'm working towards and I would appreciate y'all helping.
Okay, and I don't know if I said that or not, but it's funded by the LaSass budget. Anybody else got any questions?
Do we do this in needs assessment? Do we do LaSass also?
We do do, we do address LaSass in needs assessment, but we wouldn't fund this in needs assessment necessarily. And I think we'd really like to get started on it. Needs assessment's right around the corner, but I, I think it won't make a difference for funding source.
Okay.
So Ginger's got a healthy budget and this is something she really wants to do, so I feel like we're good to get going with it.
All right. We have a motion by Jay, seconded by Mr. Keith. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Ginger.
Thank y'all.
Hopefully that'll be done soon. The next item is a recommendation to accept the price from Johnson Loans Lawn Services in the amount of $1,400. Mr. Ray, you wanna explain this to us?
Well, it's, it's exactly what it says. It's just the parking lot here, you know, it's really got to where we, when you're recognizing these students and teachers, this place really gets jam-packed. We just kinda wanna bring a little bit more order to the parking. I did wanna recommend the, actually the higher of the two, but because it, it actually included a few more things that we needed, so that would be my recommendation.
It, it actually will repair those concrete, those big concrete pieces that have all come unattached.
Wheel stops.
Yeah, what are they, what are they, right?
Wheel stops.
Wheel stops. It will fix those.
Mr. President, I have a question, a clarification for Ms. Tudor. I know we kinda made a pact about doing these projects that pop up along the year and waiting for needs assessment. Is this something possibly that we can wait till needs assessment comes to do this project?
We could wait to do this. It is, you know, it's kind of a, a safety concern, but it would be, we actually did fund this in needs assessment maybe three years ago, but it never got completed.
Well, then let's do it.
And that money doesn't carry over, so we could put this off till needs assessment. It'd be a different...
What's your recommendation?
It's, it's, you know, we're gonna start needs assessment in January. It could be at the top of Ray's list and we could fund it from a different funding source if we wait for needs assessment.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we wait till needs assessment and get this on our needs assessment, please.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Amy that we wait for the needs assessment. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Jay. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes have it, the motion passes. The next one's yours too, Mr. Ray, recommendation to accept the price from Gibco in the amount of $26,537 to replace the tennis court lights at Marksville funded by the indirect cost.
We had two different quotes for this job and there was a significant difference in the two. One was basically just repairing just what we had to to get it going, but those lights and the poles and the electrical are all in bad, bad shape. Literally, when you go over there, those old lights pull a lot of voltage and those lines are so hot, they burn out. Morgan, I can't tell you how many times he goes over there fixing wires and stuff that it just burn up. When I opened the box the other day, one of the 220 double pole breakers fell out. It had burned up. All that to say, if we're gonna spend some anyway, let's go ahead and do it all and get it done right. And, and I think we'll be much more pleased. And if you'll notice on there that we're gonna try to solicit some funds from the city.
We're gonna try to split it with the city.
So anyway, hopefully we do have, we'll see.
Mr. President?
Ms. Amy?
I, I've called multiple times on this and I appreciate y'all. My constituents play pickleball just about every night. And I spoke to them when I saw this come up on the agenda, thank y'all for, you know, getting a price. But this is another thing that I think should be punted to needs assessment, 'cause I don't wanna start these pet projects in the middle of the year and then we have the wrong, we set the wrong tone. Also, you know, I've asked them, are they okay? They have lights right now, they can play. They would love to do whatever we can, put the money into. They thought about maybe the Rapids Foundation. They thought maybe they could get some kind of funding from there. We talked about the city. So they would like to sit down and discuss that with us, but I asked them if they could wait until needs assessment comes around and we get that going, and they were fine with it. So I'd like to make a motion that we put this off to needs assessment also.
Are, are we tabling these? Is that our official term?
I don't... Just can you put them on your needs assessment radar, like?
We can, just put it on.
So we don't have to remember to...
Okay.
'Cause don't you ask for requests from us for needs assessment?
I do, I do ask for some requests.
And that way we'll just have...
No, we don't need to table them. We just need to put them like she says.
Okay, got it.
And then let the needs assessment decide, you know?
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Ricky. Any further discussions? Everybody understand the motion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Ray. Number 25, recommendation to accept the low price of Russ Construction, a $14,358 for replacing the roof at Fifth Ward Community Center funded by indirect cost. Do we have a motion?
Is that Russ Construction or Russ Carpentry? Is that Russ Construction?
It is Russ Carpentry.
Carpentry, okay. 'Cause I know it's two brothers, one has a...
Yes, sir, you're exactly right.
I so moved that we accept the low price of Russ Carpentry.
That's the price for replacing the entire roof.
They, they did some work before. It was, I think it was an insurance claim, wasn't it?
Yes, we collected the money.
They messed it up when they, when they fixed it and this is to get it back right.
That's the only reason that I would think that, that we need to consider doing this. I know that they have a, a good thing they're going. They do a good job on raising money. We collected the money for this and it was botched. And that's no reflection on you, Mr. Ray, are you?
No, it was before I.
It was before y'all's time, but it was not done right. It was not done properly. So that part of it is still leaking. And that's the only reason why I would like to see us replace it, is because of the insurance.
I'll second it.
Mr. Lynn?
Ms. Amy?
He's second, Ricky's seconded, but I have a comment on this. I spoke to Mr. Robin about it. I don't feel it's responsible for us, the APSB, to incur the cost. They get the building at in-kind services. We don't pay for repairs for our in-kind services. And I don't know how or why our leases vary from one to the other. It seems like a shit pretty cookie cutter, but Red River paid rent and they paid for all their building maintenance. The sheriff uses one of our buildings. He put a new roof on. When the hurricane came, I remember throwing up the red flag saying, why is Fifth Ward making a claim? Because they're their own people. And we had multiple claims at different schools, so we said, well, if we just group it in with the others, it's sale lobby. And we did that. But now here we are years later and I'm really sorry that they did a bad job, but I don't feel it's responsible for us to fix their roof. And they have a great business, they're doing awesome. I pulled up Saturday, I couldn't get the parking lot. I mean, they're booming, but I think that's something we're setting an expectation for other people with in-kind services, that they want us to do the repairs. And unfortunately, we cannot, we have children in classrooms that are needing roof repairs and other things and to spend it on a community center that's an in-kind agreement is not.
Mr. President, do we have a copy of the, the lease that would, that would show?
I do.
I'm sure they have parameters on the lease.
Didn't they look at that?
We have looked at it. It doesn't specifically addresses, it doesn't specifically address a roof. It's on my desk if you'd like to look at it.
And they do collect money here, like for admission to things and stuff like that, right?
Yes. And I will tell you, Robin and I both read the lease and we both interpreted it differently. We had a long discussion about should we really be putting new roofs on buildings that don't have children in it? And y'all, I'm gonna tell you, if we're fixing to build another new building, then we're gonna incur some cost. So it makes me, like I do, I think it does set a bad precedent.
And I will say...
And I don't mind going and getting the lease if you'd like to look at it. It's very short.
The other part of it, they were awarded $100,000, Fifth Ward and Hesmer, to put into the buildings. That's money that came down from, you know, from the state, which is great. But they just got $100,000. They put air conditioner in the gym, you know? I don't see where we need to fund a patch in the roof for the second time.
Anybody else, Ms. Ricky?
That's the only reason I'm, I'm for doing it, is 'cause we fixed it and put a bad product of it. And we took it upon, we took, we took ownership of it and fixed it, although we shouldn't have, no, I mean, that's the only reason.
I agree with, I agree with Ms. Amy. They do, they do some amazing community activities out there, but for the most part, it is a business. And like she said, you know, Saturday, it was from one end to the other, you could barely get into the parking lot or down the road. So I think we've done a good job... you could barely get into the parking lot or down the road, so I think we've done a good job of supporting them on some, uh, some projects over the years financially, and it's just time for them to take over and, uh, do as necessary for, if they're gonna continue to use the building.
Okay, anybody else?
If it's an in-kind service, I just can't see giving somebody money that doesn't help educate our children. If they were paying rent and it was our responsibility to fix it, it's a different story.
And we're receiving a hundred thousand dollars from the state?
Any other comments? All right, we do have a motion by Mr. Keith, seconded by Mr. Ricky, all in favor, raise your right hand at the top of the gavel. Could we be three fars, all against, same sign? Three against?
Motion fails.
That's a fail.
Okay, I need to get names, Amy.
Against?
Yes, against, yeah, and then my fars are Ricky and Mr. Lynn, and Keith. Got it.
All right, anything else need to be brought up before the board, if not, do we hear a motion to adjourn? Moved by Mr. Ricky, seconded by Mr. Jay, all in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Y'all.
Thank y'all.